So on page one. 13, monitoring the fire safety standards and the force and respect of in camera discretionary expenses and the full recognition has presented on the 13th of this Um favor. And having free declaration between your individuals. Not for shot.
I'm not sure. Tuesday. One. Five. It's. This is. Uh.
Okay. And you should start your panel table. My God, it is amazing. Petition's in down the vision. And four point one, Albert Grove, fifty good fish, world post development blocks, out of class. With the bro, I'll find a concrete for you.
You're great. She's pretty. Yeah. I am just like fifty good fish, world. But also a good person. Let me start by saying that you should not be that hipper or forward. The council receives. Waiting for the letter to give us. Your courage should be able to recognize. How she will. Voice of concern. I understand. It is the first thing. Patient. Patient of the. Part of me. Of the. The occasion of the trial in. Uh, final flow diet of the issues. High frequency. Thousand five. Estimation return. Restoration return. Mentioned first. Standing in this. We might. And that will be the responsibility of the other. But he did say. I could, I could apply to the municipal council for all, for all our parts of that cross. Which I have taken. Today again, I'm working fast at downtown to look to who's applying a fire item. Fifty good fish. So that we can build our new store, which will then have that fairer. At this point, I have invested over a quarter million dollars. Once completed, I would have an excess of three million dollars. Now, I cannot wish to incur any more costs. But don't make cheap. As I leave this down. Responsibility to supply the existing business of fire item. As I pay the same tax rate as every other tax state. I have no fire item. No sewer. Now, I need an answer for this though. Uh. While I have been paying the same taxes rate. Other businesses for the best service since two thousand and twelve. Which is the year the building group changed. Two. Mr. Smith has made an appointment for. August fifteen, twenty twenty two, the council meeting. Which is a waste of time. He won't have any information from me unless the firm convenes by the town of Perk Lake. As drawing compilations to show publication, hybrid, etc. I believe councils should be involved with the CEO, then investors in the town of Perk Lake. If the town wishes to grow, you need to keep the businesses you have. If you lose one and sometime gain one, that's not growth. To summarize, I need to know that the town Perk Lake will invest in the fire item, the fifty good fish. So I know what direction that they're taking. Ask them first to make. Statewide item. Sell as is. Build smaller. Retire. If fifty good fish becomes a store direct or hybrid. I thank you for listening to my challenge and hoping to get back to me as soon as time is of the essence. But thank you as well for your time. Good practice.
Thank you. Awesome from the table. Fast filing.
Uh, Mr. Bro. Do you know that the art warehouse, uh, discipline? Yeah. That's me to the top. Yes, it's very required, uh. Beautiful. That's. Us. First part. Of the red and white. For. Uh, ten thousand pages. This is one with five thousand square meters. Eight building with six thousand four hundred ones per feet, the fire of fire item. And two hundred and ninety five square feet. Two hundred and ninety two. Uh, probably six ten thousand because it's considered a new building. Again, requires the. Fire item. Before the existing building. So again, the fire item. We had everything to call about that time. But if we were to have one wall standing up. Wouldn't it be too? Yeah. Because the fire item is just big. Spot thirty. Just want to clarify something. This is. Even water or not. A this is. Uh, I have a question. Who can do one line from these? Or when you, you could burn, blow the fire. Which is, it is, it is more than a problem. Power. Um. I have a question. Um, I think not. The meaning of that is. To recap back.
Uh, sorry, I think. No cross. Me. Um, this, that came from your.
Okay.
Report. Yeah. It's just a property, yeah, a posture.
Okay, uh. In any case, I might be normal to be in a case of microtill. Um, because it might be burning. Um, but I wanted to begin painting.
Well, there's two lines.
That just, um.
Why would you think, um? I think you're wrong. It would be the same.
Sure. It's all control.
Talk us through. Okay.
Uh, which. Station.
Well. It would be, just to get property with.
Yeah, just about the view. Yeah, it's just. It's. It's. And it goes over the cloud and that's just to the interest of. Property. Okay.
Want to. Um, uh, I. Quickly.
Me.
And that. There's a new standard. By that, the council. The fact. We try to. With all the. So. Think. Process. I think about the powers. Find their original cost, his hand. Nonsense. But we still know many. Who can go into the council and accept. So we understand. If it's really, really, nothing on me, for me, or. Much. But you're. Not yet. So. Any other show. What may I say? But really, 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 really. Tell me. Right. That's. Not this. Uh. Still want. That for me. First. So. Yeah.
Thank you. Council members. Thank you. I didn't preach it. Thank you so much. This is bro. Um, and definitely for being there that is. Um, today, unfortunately, we do require staff input. Um, just to do the addition just for our purposes. I do appreciate that. Name and. Thank you. Don't forget this. Okay, um, we need the motion. Yeah. Five thousand. We are all about. This is the show. The phase of. To review the information and by. The council has some information. Into the market. It is done by others. Commentating. Suppose now, really, I. Item five point two minutes, council. Group five thousand. Foundation. Only you draw that after. Our meeting. Of the. And the. Accelerator. I'll do the seven twenty twenty. And then it's a. Um, favor. Of course, if you have waited, I don't care. Oh, we love. Stop. I'm ridiculous. Thank you. Item number five point two minutes is local. Next. Then is a local and regional works. They have. Rangers. Federal. We resolve the path. Secret of following meetings. Report of the eighth twenty twenty three. Sendings of the district of fifteen purpose of society and extension of our district of the eighth seventy twenty twenty. Column favor. The falls. Money. I think. Item number six point one, aerial ladder. The asked.
Both members of council. For a day that lasted a new station of threat by the council. We investigate various options for this depends on her. Forever a lot of problem. Which is being our service. Uh, not provided support in the room. Instead, the board was assisting a firefighter. And. Part of the. Dog. Some options. The dog. And if. About the. Boss. But. The rock. President. The. The. Options. Successive. Every law. Has to be. But for the. All was. Not for. Point. But given the great demand for using a required source. Believe it or sell it. In a. Fund. Which. Time here. The council. The power of the. Congress. About the. The work. Uh. People's divisions that may. Uh. Watching. For the more. Even. A. Idiots. Sell all. This. Work. From music. These. Missions. But the question. The suggestion. You know. Which better? The proper rounds. Don't you mean? Uh, doesn't it? Sister. Now, if you want to press that you pay your two hundred thousand dollars. It means suggestion is the best. And this was important. Third. The method. I'm also saying that. There are going. Some. The fashion of our. Better person. Our negotiation. But it's still a. Easy. Is important to know that the city. There are best. If I was doing. For example. The. Barman. Twenty twenty eight. Eight. Six. Like that. Usually. Off. I'm. I think. We've also known. Maybe. There are no. By this. By. Personally.
Any questions from? The.
Just. Uh. What has been proposed here? Does that truly mean? Means Perk Lake? Or does it? So. It's something. Which is a negative. That you have. Um. Calling. I was. See the. The. So maybe. Support. We will. Hope you're. You may be. That. That. Pro. The process. That we. Spirit. The. The. So. Absolutely. Thank you, officer. I don't think. It's. Actually, this. This is. If you jump out.
That's why I can't. So. Please. And this. But. And consider that. They have. The. Official. It's not official. Official. If there's something that. Talk to them. People. As long as. Official house, a favor. Making up. Hey, so.
I'll. They represent. So the. That's. When. I'm. Sure. It's. Uh, probably. Perfect. Definitely. Uh, okay. Perfect. Um. Of course. That's. I think. Really. This person. But it's. That. Turn it off more. To. Slaughter.
Okay. The council, I'll be. Being. Right. Um, this. Definitely. Um, from what I understand, we have. Probably that. And all of this. Um, and we're glad that. We got. And it's me. And we propose a new change. So. I'm just curious. So. It's time. And to. I'm just hoping for a change.
No, I don't want. Okay. I think. But it's still.
Number. Number four. Should we take? First. Yes.
It's. About. Um. To.
How can this change? You have to steal. It's something.
Mm-hmm.
Change. Absolutely. So. So. So.
Around finish. Making the. I. Is it on? I. I gave this in this. Situation. And. And the cost of. This. And.
I think. Master shot up.
Uh. This. Uh, the person. What side do you prefer? Another. Store. Okay. Uh. So. Well. Okay. Uh. It's. You. What? Three months. I'll change. What is the last? Now. Changes from. Sit down and talk. Thousand dollars. She for me. We can be more cheaper. But it's not. Also. It's the. She. Options. Well. I think it's. Absolutely. She is.
I think just to. Um. We think. What? Question. The underlying question is that procedurally. If we pass. Supporting the motion that. It's. This is. This is. People, we don't have to go back and do another motion, say. We aren't changing the budget. This motion itself. Sorry, I heard. And it took a second to kind of catch up on what the, the question really was. But yes. This motion here effectively, if it's passed, will change the budget lines. It doesn't change. Um. Second. Possibly. Yeah, but it does change our. But that will be a, um. Public. Nation. Yeah. Does that answer your question, babe?
Yes. That's.
Yeah, those changes. So any further questions regarding this? On the table? I would. And that's. Very. And we. Back. President. It was all about. What you're saying. Do you really do it? And only very well. Okay. We know about other options that are allowed in the region. So you know what? Development changes from the working model we do. The control of. As we need. And the. And. And. We did it. But. And. But overall. That. Um, favor. Proposed. Van Leeuwen. Thank you, Dan. Item six point three, proposed. Mediation for install. I think she can.
Item six point three, proposed mediation for install at clean sheet and with fee. And I'm saying you're right, of course.
First, if I can believe, if that is helpful for you. You are the one who suggested, uh, the unit transaction. Please, and you don't, you know, there's things that will. Nothing. So, the first step. It's not. It's going to be. In fact. Very good. Uh. So. So. Was. Hmm. But. But. The. So. It could pass. Well, the data is telling.
Thank you. Um, I think, it probably is, um, I, I don't get the three three eight. It's, it's, um, I see, I have. Many. Which situations. These are the, you know, things that. Shopping. And, it's something that we saw, and we made. People work at the daycare, and walk children down that way, and, you know, sidewalk, and. With the children, ride for four weeks or five. Um, the present, both of them, we. Um. They have. Pretty good, the sidewalk, it's like. It's like, maybe, maybe. And they're almost, um, I miss the, I think, because they're once, we got the big block on, and then, and then after that. I found. Yes. For this.
We third one, seem to have to look up. To me, it seems like it's, um, uh. Or am I just being short? That we, the population. It's a, it's a. Oh. Now, the version really, really, like, even in my pickup. Feel like, Steve asked. Let's, I mean, when you're driving, your vision is a straight, I agree. But when I'm down through the road, it's like, check the intersection, every time I'm down through, I feel like. Hmm, this. Uh, so, um, I'm all okay. Anything, just, you know, say. Just. If you don't, that I. Like, it's probably an MTO regulation, some regulation.
Thank you. Thank you, Master Shaba. Okay, I'm. I think, for highlight, Nancy. Master Shaba. Yep. Nice to know.
Yeah. Number three. No. You have to do one role, you never learn fast, but we. But. Be able. That why. Awesome. Sorry, because I'm always distracted. Really, it's just. Perfect, it's perfect. First, it's. Soft on. On that. Thing, we're thinking of.
Thank you, Master Shaba.
It's beautiful. That's, uh, yeah. And we just have to, uh. So, I'm. I'm really glad to say, really, really, and. The first time, I really, I really, I really, I really. Next, I would like to make, uh, maybe. Um. It's better.
Okay, um, okay. We'll see. Think we're going to be in trade. So. Okay. Yes. I stopped, I'm not going to skip. Three, four, five, six. It's not, um.
I'm communicating. She, if signing, uh, it's. Beating. Sure. Yeah. And they are, um. They have been one. Uh, she's. Uh, but. But.
Thank you, Master Shaba. Okay, um. We've got. In. Here, we have all the partners of twenty three, and that is the global line, including special connections, the way the. And finally, our other meeting, twenty two, seven, twenty three, and thirty. Coming in. Lady, and then we. If you care. Item six point three, proposed mutual financial reporting.
About. Um. The issue, the budget per. This story, of course, I started here, the issue, the issue. Still. I'm. But, oh. Oh. Four. So. So. She. So. But. So. So. It's. Then. It's. Or. So. Um. So. So. I've. Means. But. So. Well. Well. Okay. So. It's. So. So.
Council, Council Ben. We're going to, to present, so we're about, um, this much.
Yes. Of course. There. Uh. It's. So. I.
I don't know. So, we're going to change about. Um. Okay.
You think, it's a. It's. Okay. Alright. So.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Hmm. Me. I think. Uh, that's, I think, from financial reporting, also, that he built a, that he thought about. From the paper. I'm noted. Item number one. Thank you, Sam. Item number seven, considerations, the little closing, taxi, to the. Not nearly past. For the plus, um. For this. Um, for this. We're concerned about. Creating the same report. Information leads to the. Um, the power. Of. For, by the, the state, the, the cause. For all, the, the, the. By, uh, that. So for us to. Make this again. Which. Yes. Actually, on you, maybe the app, specifically. Um.
I think. Each, uh. Being a. So. Such. So.
So. Use the private, uh, the same base, definitely, by council and government. And while the council on certain consideration, and a great amount of personal feedback, and such as data, and. And, uh, as council found, if the dollars can be considered, it is, and, uh, the person I work for, and which is personally, which is based in. Therefore, we resolve all the international courts, where we use, so that the public, uh, participation, and, uh. Basically, in the business intelligence, and we have process, and. Column favor. The focus, and, and. Item number eight, introduction, meeting, and consideration of violence, eight point nine one, twenty three dash. So, you would, uh, come back with yours, second effect. Help to resolve a problem, like, egg lover, stop, find, and, you know, this. Booker, and doing incorporation, and that, thirty. Five, number twenty three, zero four nine, to be the. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Um, favor. The one, now, I'm trying to. That's, two. And we've got, possibly, well, several, second, uh. The thing to, we should all, someone, that's. All the twenty three, so all zero, being the. Reason, and the contribution, every, and the infrastructure, and, and, for the, and, and, for. Column favor. The focus, mainly, uh. Item number nine, question from. Item number ten, basis of motion. The. Ben. Item number eleven, const. Pass. Pass. Cool.
Uh, yeah, I really. Hmm. It. Hmm. It can. One day. Any. Hmm. Can you shut the side now? So, another. We don't. This. Um. Uh. I think it's. The. Top. It is. Don't be, it's just. Uh. Uh. Yeah, I mean, in, uh, this. Uh, which is crazy, as always, that, staying, uh, in place, and this, as well. And. She, uh, behind. May, L C B I, uh. Actually. It takes. Uh. And also. It's. I'll keep having ceremony. And. Yeah, I'm scared. Kennedy's. For. So, Einstein. After, I think, I went, six, seven, eight. I don't think I've been to. Medication, probably. Any day. I, people. Me. It's. Time. Which. Um, David. Small club. But to bring you to. Point. Uh. It's nice to hear. I only heard one game. Because. It's the pumpkin. It's nice to go. The ball. So, uh, yeah, I. My. But I've rivalled the old days. Now only. I'm more personal. Some of you. My daughter's. Vision. That's about the start. What happened was she was using. He paid up. She. Please. She had said. For me. Uh. But one. But I. Used fire extinguisher. Put it out. Uh, but. In her panic was unsuccessful. So she grabbed her baby. She's. Her baby is, uh. Blessing to my. And exited. It's amazing for me. He. Brother. Sherman. He's better known and not everyone is. Was a professional firefighter in this town. One in thirty years. Gives four doors out to escape. He heard. Daughter's. I can't. That is. He heard. Those things. Her daughter's. So. He commonly walked down the street. He grabbed her, just as my daughter was waiting for baby. Uh. He went in the back for. Fire extinguisher. Extinguish. He didn't worry about rest himself. He worried about his young story. It was just something where. Need. Now, I've tried. Previously with special. And, uh. Robert. But it didn't stop. I didn't know what's there very quickly. They got off the truck. I think being professional. He told them all pertinent information they needed. Before they entered the house. They knew exactly. What. And in terms of the, uh. Fire department. You know. Unless you knew, you wouldn't know. Who were the professionals? Were the ball. They were aside by side. No arguing, no arguing. He changed his. The charge. Firefighter's. And, uh. I have permission. Uh, to team chief. Melanie Bra. Um. I'm not going to go into my daughter's past. It was. They eat up. Up here. Very tough. So needless to say, she was distraught. And. She retired privately. She. She was very distraught. Melanie in. Her. State. Vision. She. She. She found. She was a mother. And she got. Baby. All. And. Unless. He may not. Chief's job. But. It's same that she did. Uh. To me. And some of the other. So. Um. The. Vision. Uh. But. Um. And then after the fire. They're beginning. Explaining everything. Just. That's what's based. This. And. If me, you know, was in my house. You know, you say this to. Matters. Uh, but during that, Melanie, uh. Said she. I part. This is. So. He kept. Back. Don't. The knowledge. Fire. Easy. On behalf.
Council Shaba.
See you, uh. Whatever. Stop. Yeah. Potential. I'm not telling her TV that we have. Been brought with you. It's. Uh. Thank you. How about? All right. All. Hey. Hey. All. But. I'll. Please. In fact, we need to. Use our system. And as well. You see. The. Part. Of. I don't know. I do. It's. Pretty. See.
Thank you for the. Thank you. I'm glad my. I'm a good. But I'm. Good. So I do apologize. Uh, since our last meeting June. I'm in twelve twenty three. And had the pleasure of speaking with Laura Taylor, Mr. T. Wright. Regarding some local history. Points of interest and purple lake pride. It's always wonderful to be in contact with individuals who left. Like decades ago. But we're still so emotionally. Who are. Ex purple lakeers are more invested in the success and future of purple lake. Than so. But it speaks to the true thread. That purple lake is. Uh, I attended the first board meeting with Nelson Dyken, CEO of. At the Purple Lake Tourism Development Corporation, which is an exciting venture that I'm sure will have long lasting. All developments of our committee. I've attended weekly wild, wild land fire information briefing with municipal partner delivered by N R F. The zoo. These are very informative sessions, including overviews on the current fire situation weekly and now biweekly. Uh, opening a two base form of communication and education. On provincial preparedness level levels. The five stages of control, mutual partnerships among. A variety of other subject matters. As a part of purple lakes and agency management team and feel more aware of and more. Care. For fire events if they were to occur. I attended a pride walk. At King Ross. This event took place due to dedication of only two young individuals to the community. Who took the lead in twenty nineteen and again this year. If members of the public do wish to volunteer or wanting to make your celebration. You can reach out to them via Facebook at purple lake. I had the honor of addressing the members of the Masonic Lodge during their centennial celebration. I just want to point out that this is having a hundred year celebration only for the. African communities. Celebration. Uh, I'd also like to note, I have never experienced that level of hospitality. During any of my other. I truly felt I was among gentlemen and gentle ladies. And it is inexperienced almost. I had the opportunity to attend the email navigating conflict in relationship. As an elected official with members. Of council. This training invited techniques to deal with conflict in all aspect of relationships. Whether it be as a member of the public, uh. With a member of the public as an elected official. In your career or even your own spouse. Training presented the opportunity to reflect on our own conflict styles. And reinforce emphatic listening skills that are so right. The public source. I reviewed the proposed provincial planning statement twenty twenty three and submitted comments. The deadline, uh, for submitting has been extended to August fourth. If any members of council are. Saying submitting, uh, reading the documents. And supporting as well. As for the problems, we should view this policy as a whole rather than a set of individual policies to understand how those policies. Are to be implemented. Personally, I found the sections regarding territory without municipal organization. Of particular interest, as well as the sections regarding economic development. And municipal supervision and follow systems. Due to a sudden change in plans, I was in purple lake with the candidate celebrations and had the opportunity to, uh, attend breakfast at the Legion. For their annual lead Noah behind. I attend this scavenger hunt at the museum. The events at Noah, uh, Tober, including the South Side tour. Via YouTube. And finally, you will. Put all that back on the lines. Did they? Have a handy name this fall? A little bit, just before. Uh, I thank councillor Dykens for taking on the purple lake team. And volunteering for the campaign. And councillor Owens for taking. Much of the celebration and candidate, I'm thankful to the volunteers. And I have a new perspective. On how the community members. Consistently give back and act to the quality of the. These words need to be committed for their commitment to our community and we truly do. We did receive a thank you card from Gatling Water World Project regarding purple lake's site. Uh, for their for visiting for Vancouver from Vancouver. Uh, I'd like to thank Kerry for reaching out to our community and raising the purple. From file. Country. Is certainly positive step and one which we should improve. And of course, we are sending our positive thoughts to the municipal council and the community of Royal Lake. Hoping that project. Succeed for the community. I received a call from a member of the public wishing to express good thanks. To Mr. Chapfong and his staff for a job well done. This individual had a complaint about an overgrown town property. Which was quickly followed up on and resolved by that team. I have to say, the all. Feedback from the community is welcome by the office of the mayor and all council members. Sharing credos of this magnitude is always such a pleasure. And finally, today I had a meeting with the administrator of these. Uh, issues and solutions. Thank you for involving members of council with that very lengthy report. Now, deputy. By councillor Dolly Dyken, seconded by councillor. We resolve that. To remember members of council and opposite of the mayor, we would see. Comment favor. Both. Not noted. There was no additional information. Not given. And we will not give a short. Research.
Okay, so we will now move into closed session. Adam Deputy Kirk.
So moved by councillor Vlad Shaba, seconded by councillor Katie Owens. We resolve that council adjourned in camera for section two thirty nine two. For the municipal act two thousand and one, I demanded to dis. A proposed repending acquisition or dis. Disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any communications carried on. Or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Uh, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipality or local boards. A matter in respect of which a council, board, committee, or other body may hold. But goes meeting under another act. And information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada. A province or territory or crown agency of any of them. Outward. Oh, sorry, at six oh one P M.
Thank you.
All in favor. For the following reasons. Item thirteen point one, extension to must build by clause, uh, eight and ten Calback Avenue. And item thirteen point two, monitoring of fire safety standard. Thank you. I have the old version of the agenda.
All in favor.
Opposed, none noted. Item carried unanimous.
We will now reconvene.
Uh, so moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. We resolve that council reconvene and open the session at six twenty P M. All in favor. Oh, this none noted. Item carried unanimous. Uh, any items of pecuniary interest coming from closed? None noted. Item fourteen point one, extension of must build by clause. Eight and ten Calback Avenue. So. Moved by councillor Katie Owens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. We resolve that report number twenty twenty three D E V zero two seven entitled extension of must build by clause, eight and ten Calback Avenue be received. And that council approved a six month extension to the must build by clause included in the sales agreement for eight and ten Calback with. And finally, that administration notify the owner of the extension in writing in the form satisfactory of achieved administrative officer, chief. Official and legal counsel. All in favor. Opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw. Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Patrick Crowley. We resolve that the following bylaw be writ, numbered passed, signed by the mayor, municipal clerk, and sealed. Corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number twenty three zero five one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held Tuesday, June, July. Eleventh, twenty twenty three. Oh, twenty, sorry. Tuesday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, Wednesday, June twenty, twenty twenty three, and Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty three. All in favor. Opposed, none noted. Item carried unanimous. Adjemant. Moved by councillor Katie Owens, seconded by councillor Vlad Shaba. We resolve that this regular meeting of council will now adjourn at six twenty one P M. All in favor. Opposed. Item carried unanimous. This meeting is adjourned.